Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for tonight, February 19th. We have six of the seven Planning Commissioners in attendance. Commissioner Badon has been excused for the evening. We'll go ahead and get started with the consent calendar. Entertained a motion. Commissioner Hatch.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting, February 5th, 2019.
Thank you. Commissioner England.
I'll second those.
Thank you. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to our one only public hearing. We have the Guru Grant Religious Mission, 7537 South Redwood Road, conditionally used permit request in an R1-8B zone. Harpal Ture is the applicant. Are you here, sir? Please come on forward to the microphone and tell us what you need us to know. And if you'll state your name and address for the record as well, just so we can get that on the record.
Sure, my name is Katrina Judge, and I work as an attorney with Curt McConkey. And the exact address of the law firm, I'll get back to you.
We've got you with Curt McConkey, I think we can find that right? We'll get you.
Yeah, they're downtown.
It's in Thanksgiving Park 4, 2600 West Executive Parkway, Suite 400 in Lincoln.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But I just first of all want to introduce Mr. Harpal Ture. He's, you may not know, but he's actually quite renowned. He is the owner and operator of the Bombay House, and that is an exceptional restaurant in foothills. And I have gone there myself, and there are people waiting up outside the door continuously, and has excellent reviews. And so, so I thought it would be helpful if you understood a little more about, you know, he's been an exceptional businessman in the community for many years, and providing appointments and such. So, the property that Mr. Ture purchased is the one we're dealing with, and the application was through a conditional use permit. Everybody seems to be aware of that, the Sikh religion. And we're very appreciative. Mr. Mark Forsyth and also the Sherry and Julie were very helpful in helping in navigating this process. It was a new process, but they were very kind to work with, and took the time to actually understand the use of the property for the Sikh religion. Because on the outside, it looks like, well, it's a house. How on earth are you going to fit all thousand people there someday, as they gather? And that wasn't the purpose at all. The main purpose was to house the holy scriptures for the Sikh religion. And it is like in a temple, said as it's regarded, and the scriptures need to be woken up in the morning and put to bed at night. And they actually teach this down at BYU, when they teach this, that's how they put it, that it's almost just as a person to be put to bed in respect. And there's a room there for meditation and spirituality. And as such, small gatherings can come, you know, adore honor of God, and participate, and have some personal worship time. And there's a Guru Granthi who's there, who's a religious minister, and much of the sacred text is sung. And so, they have a specialist who's come from India, who can speak the language, and is trained, and trained in the music to be able to assist with this. And who's a caretaker, and that's why a house, because they can live there, and have the sort of caretaking that's needed to be on hand. And then, of course, on Sunday, there's three families will come and gather together. There's classrooms in one of the rooms of the home, there's no architectural changes to the home. And so, that was the purpose. And it's a very peaceful religion, you know, there'd be no more noise than a family reunion gathering that you have on a Sunday of any home individual. And so, the appreciative of the recommendation, and the understanding I've had of parking and the allowance for that, and very mindful of the need to get a permit, further permit if there was to be changes even behind, and is not intended by. So, is there anything you would like to add?
Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll reserve some time for you after the public comment, if you need to address any of the comments that are brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forsyth.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, I'm just going to talk about the zoning and the appropriateness for the area. So, basically, this site, actually, I'll go back to this one for context. So, the location's just directly across from West Jordan Middle School on Redwood Road, just directly next to that pedestrian bridge across the road there. So, as far as the zoning goes, I'll go back. So, the entire area on the east side is all within the R1-8 zone, which is a single-family residential zone. You can kind of see all the single-family homes that are surrounding it, so it's really kind of a neighborhood area. So, it's right west Jordan, most of our residential areas do, you know, it's not uncommon to see a church or a place of worship within one of these zones. They're usually pretty low-key, and so, those are not only allowed in that zone, but are considered by staff to be appropriate, and this case is really no exception. So, in looking at this lot itself, this is about an 8,000 square foot lot, so pretty similar to the properties around it. And the house has floor area of about 2,300 square feet, so it's a little smaller than the house, but it's, but judging by the scale of this use, and since it's, the most attendance they're going to have on any one given day is going to be about 15, it's really pretty small, and really doesn't change the scope of the use. So, access, they've got a single driveway onto Redwood Road. That's basically wide enough for three cars to be parked side by side. But if you look at the total area of the driveway, they've got about enough space for five cars, including the garage. And based on our conversations, the most people that they'd have there on any given day, again, would be 15, this would be for their Sunday meetings. So, and they've explained to us that most of these people would carpool to the site, probably have about eight people per vehicle, so really, there wouldn't be more than three vehicles on the site. As for the rest of, the rest of the week, they'll also have some, well, they'll have one classroom within the house, which will have about five to seven people, again, on any given day. And then, the upstairs room would be the main worship area, which is about 221 square We figure the attendance is going to be a lot smaller for this one, it's kind of more on an appointment basis, and is open to, you know, anyone who wants to come and worship at that point. Those services usually run about one to three hours, so it's pretty short, usually in the mornings or later in the evening. So, based on those findings, and the findings explained further in the staff report, staff's recommending approval of the Guru Grant Religious Mission Conditional Use Permit.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, we will go ahead and open up our public hearing at this time. If you have any comments, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We do have one request, Mr. Norman Brown. Sir, if you want to come on forward, we'll let you begin the commentary.
Friends, neighbors, my name is Norman Robinson Brown. I live 1661 West, 7575 South. Based on the map, I'm just over in this cul-de-sac to the southeast of the proposed site. I guess I have two questions, based on the information, Mr. Forsyth. It will no longer be a residence.
Sir, can you speak right into the microphone, just so we can get it on the record? Thank you.
Is this no longer going to be a residence? The proposed change, is it to no longer be a residence? The yes or no, my word.
We'll address your questions after.
Thank you. My concern with that is just parking, really. 7525 gets very congested multiple times during the day, mostly at the beginning and the ending of school. It is a drop-off point for the overhead to the junior high and elementary, and it is not regularly patrolled. It's a safety issue that I encounter regularly approaching my home. It is often blocked virtually to one lane in access either to the west toward Redwood or toward, to the east toward 1530. And I understand the need for a religious setting that is being asked for. My concern with that is that the parking is pretty inadequate for anything other than the three or four cars that have been mentioned. It's difficult on a good day to get in and out of Redwood Road. You deal with those problems probably more than I do. But those are my concerns. I think that the opportunity for that home to be used is wonderful, and for a religious setting, it's wonderful. But if it's going to be changed from a residence, that wasn't noted. And the second thing is the number of people that might be using that residence at any given moment. If five cars are there with eight people per person, it doesn't take much of a mathematician to come up with 40. And if that's the case, I think that that might be a fire issue for us and others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section of this meeting, and we'll bring us back to the Planning Commission. Really quickly, I think I can go ahead and just speak to your questions, sir. So, first of all, if I understand correctly, there will be somebody who still lives in this house full-time, so it will still be a home with the opportunity to serve also as a place of worship. As far as parking goes, they have provided the city with a letter of intent that states that they will be carpooling, busing, whatever, into the center. They will not be exceeding the parking requirements that are, that they were committed to themselves. So, we should have very limited parking issues, no parking issues really that I can see. Did I answer your questions? Did I speak correctly? If I miss anything, please come forward and help us out.
What you said is correct, that it will be primarily a residence for the Guru Granthi, and keeping the scriptures there, that is true. Just one other note was, the expectation to have the 15 people there is not at the same time when the school is operating, if that helps. Because their worship service, where they expect everyone to gather together and eat together, is on a Sunday. And then, you'd expect that it's not going to conflict. And likewise, the sort of meditation time is rather early in the morning, when most of us are asleep. And so, in the Sikh religion, their earlier rises than the school kids, and you'd expect that people come and worship somewhat at dawn before they go to work. So, usually, it'll just be like an individual or two, maybe three at a time.
Sir, we can't have the conversation back there, because we have to get the whole meeting recorded. Sir, so the question, as I understood it, was how many people will be in the house for, at any given time?
There's only three families that are members of this religion at this point, and so, that's 15 on a Sunday. That is not every day, that is just for the Sunday worship, the other is more individual, so you may have, and Harpal, do you want to come? So, for the actual during the week meditation, you'll have five to seven people for a classroom, and individual worship is typically how that's done. Do you know how many would be typical during the week? So, weekday, Monday morning, Tuesday?
10, 15, 15 people.
On the Sunday, but what about during the week? Would it be like two or three at a time?
About two, three cars, like maybe like 10, 15 people, 10 people.
So, would it exceed 10 to 15 people?
No, not more than that, not more than that.
Okay.
Just max people, like on a Sunday gathering, like 20 people, 15 people.
Yeah, I understand.
Not all at the same time, it's morning, coming and going and coming.
Okay, so, Mr. Ture was explaining that they do not come at the same time. So, during the week, you have, I think it's a three-hour opening in the morning, and there's like a one hour in the evening. And there's not the expectation, no one's there for three hours at a time. It's just an open session in which somebody can come and worship during the week. And if there's ever an occasion to have a larger congregation of people, for, you know how sometimes you might have an event? I guess we might call it a Christmas party, right? Or something like that, maybe a wedding? This is not a place where that occurs. This is really about the holy scripture, and having a meditation room, and small gathering. So, anything that's a larger event is always at a different site and a different place. Yeah. Does that answer the question?
I think that answers, yeah, just to kind of clarify as well, the applicant has provided a letter of intent that talks about this, and that has been made a condition of approval for this conditional use permit, that they abide by their letter of intent. So, I think we're pretty covered as far as making sure we're good, and it sounds like we've answered your questions sufficiently for you. Any other discussion from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Green.
I'm going to jump in here. I drive past this house every day, or almost every day, going into the neighborhood if I go from Redwood Road. So, Rob, I understand your concerns going down 7525. I have to tell you, anything's better than the way it's been maintained recently. That house has not been maintained at all, so as long as this house is maintained and the landscape's cleaned up and everything, I think we're in for a better use than what we're facing right now. I will add, the face of Redwood Road is changing. I know this is an R1-8 zone, and those houses to the south, there's a couple of them, someday they'll probably go. I think there's enough land, I think even there's enough land, if you had to park a couple of cars on the grass, go back into the backyard, it looks like the concrete extends to the back. The city ordinance only requires one parking spot for every 100 square feet of meeting space, and I think we're, I think we're close, I think we're inside the limits on that, so I think that this is one that, although I do understand the concern, there is traffic going out on Redwood Road, but it's, I don't think we're going to increase the traffic on Redwood Road any more than if somebody had two or three cars themselves living there. If it was my house, I'd add more cars to Redwood Road than this one's going to, if that was me living there with all the cars I have, so.
Commissioner Thomas.
Just one quick comment, or even maybe a question, and I echo the comments from Commissioner Green. I can see maybe an issue if you had to back out into Redwood Road. Is there plenty of room where you could actually turn a car on the property itself?
I think that's a question for Mr. Forsyth. I know which house it is.
Yeah, I had mentioned that in this staff report.
Okay. That was the only concerning question, is like...
Going back to the site plan, this is about 26 feet wide by 29 feet deep, so I guess if you had maybe one or two, you could turn it around, but it'd be a little difficult. If you had one car in the driveway, it'd be pretty much no problem, just a three-point turn, but more than that might be a little tricky.
In my understanding, it's going to be off-peak times anyway, so I just know how Redwood Road is. I travel that road every day also, and it can be kind of a challenge to get in and out of Redwood Road. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question of fire safety, I don't know if that was addressed, as far as having 15 people in the home at one time, or 20 people in the home at one time.
Yeah, we did look at that, that tends to be more, sorry, my intro.
You can board next.
Yeah, we did look at occupancy, so that's going to have to be determined by the building official, and one of the conditions of approval is that if any changes are made, that they do work with the building official to determine if permits are needed, and whether or not they're meeting occupancy.
Thank you.
So, I'm just going to ask, I'm going to ask the fire marshal, what do you think while we're sitting here?
You buzz down, and now you get your chance to answer the question. I like Mark's answer better. Because it's staying a resident, the fire code doesn't have a lot of teeth in residential homes. We can investigate and do all those kind of things, but we, the fire code doesn't allow us to go in and demand certain things. They have to have smoke detectors, of course. Because it's staying a residence, there's not a lot from a fire standpoint that we can go in and require of them. If they were changing it to a commercial use, then we would be a lot more excited about it. But I don't see a lot of problems, we haven't, we've got lots of homes in west Jordan where there's more than 15 people living there at any one time. It feels like my house has 15 people in it, and we only have six, so I don't see any issues with the fire safety on this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Or a possible motion?
I was trying to get there.
First one. Commissioner England wins the race.
Based on the information and findings set forth in this staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission approve the Conditional Use Permit for Guru Grant Religious Mission located at 7537 South Redwood Road in an R1-8B zone, with the conditions of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
And Commissioner Green.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your concern for west Jordan, we appreciate you. Yeah, we'll go ahead and move on to our discussion item. You're all welcome to stay if you want to, it should be fun. And I'm not sure, I'm guessing since you're here, Scott, that you're running this one? Or are you just hanging out today? Larry?
Well, when I think of marijuana, I think of Scott.
If you guys could move your conversation just outside.
Sure.
Paul, you want to help me on it? You're welcome to continue the discussion outside, we just, we need to continue our meeting in here. Thank you, guys.
And so, the statute that was passed last year, well, no, let me back up, that was voted on upon and approved by the voters last November, as far as medical marijuana has, was replaced in January by a compromise bill that the state legislature in a special session approved this statute that now requires some things of local communities. And the statute will be administered by the Department of Agriculture for cannabis processing facilities. I spoke to a person who works and who actually will be administering the program, but they're just getting up and going. Nothing can be, began before July of this year. And so, they're kind of scrambling, because their role in this is going to be much more onerous than a city's role. Really, as far as local controls, as far as cannabis processing facilities, the only control a municipality has is time, place, and manner, or zoning locations. The statute requires that if we have an industrial zone, which west Jordan has three, that it has to be a permitted or conditional use in one industrial zone, and if a city municipality has agricultural zones, which again, we have three, it has to be a permitted or conditional use in an agricultural zone. And as you recall from my discussion in the pre-meeting last week, my recommendation is that it be placed in the M2 zone rather than the M1 zone, simply for the matter that M2 requires a larger footprint, a larger acreage of property, minimum of five acres with a larger building. And it's also can be a little more secluded from neighboring properties. Now, the statute that we don't have control, where the state will not approve any processing facility that is less than 600 feet from a residential use, 1,000 feet from residential use, or 600 feet from a church, school, recreational facility, that type of thing, and that's as the crow flies. But that is up to the state to determine that in their application process. All of the, I want to back up and say one thing, a cannabis processing facility can also include a grow operation at the site. The grow operation can be up to four acres in area, along with the processing facility. That either can be greenhouses, or it could be outdoor cultivation. And so, if one was to go into an A20 zone, then they could have an outdoor grow, they could do greenhouses, but they would also require to have the processing facilities that would meet the requirement of the statute, and that is, from the moment the plant is germinated until it is finally processed and destroyed, it is tracked by a, similarly the way they track dairy cattle, and also by video progression of the plant. And so, you know, all of the regulation will be administered by the state, and so the city really will not have to, the city cannot get involved in that. And so, what I'm saying is that the only part we're involved in is actually the location of it. Now, when I talk to the Department of Agriculture, they say that these type of facilities, the person who's administering it actually comes from the industry. And so, he says that some processing facilities can emit an odor. And if you're not familiar with what marijuana smells like, it's kind of a, I think it smells like a night skunk smell. Let me put it that way. And he said if it's, if it's an outdoor grow operation, at least the maximum could be as four acres in sight, that could be a difference depending on the time, temperature, and the species of plant they're growing, some are more potent than others. However, I did bring up Commissioner Looney and Commissioner England's concern about the odor that emits from Danone, and the Department of Agriculture, who was very aware of Danone. And he said that he would not anticipate it to be anywhere near the magnitude of that odor. But he wasn't going to say that there won't be an odor with the processing facility, but it would be that odor that is associated with marijuana. He didn't think it would be detrimental to the area because of the restrictions on location, and I think that that possibly could be something the planning could, the Planning Commission could look at if there's a rezone of property to an M2 zone. Or I really don't anticipate anybody rezoning any A20 property.
Commissioner Looney.
So, I've been doing some reading since we first had this discussion, and there's a lot of complaints, particularly in California, of people that are now living next to all of this. And... And they have put in to effect several ordinances and rules of maintaining the smell. I mean, there are things that they've done to try to get rid of that. Can we institute that as well? They've got different scrubbers, they've got different, it has to be excavated at a certain height so that it has a better chance of going up rather than out. There's been a lot of discussion from people that have already been through this.
What I think is a conditional use, in the state of Utah, conditional uses, the conditions are being placed to mitigate any detrimental impacts or perceived detrimental impacts to the surrounding community. So if any is an issue and we can validate that, then I do not see any reason why we could not put a condition of approval on that. As far as the operation, I don't think we could get involved in that. But the extranality, where they are crossing property lines, and like you said, in California, and I've heard there's California and Oregon, however, they didn't have a vague proximity from residential areas, they're right in the middle of some cases in residential areas, which I think is a mistake. But I don't see a reason why we could not put those as condition. Not an attorney, our attorney might have an opinion on this, but I don't know if he wrote it this early in the game. Because, believe me, this is uncharted territory for all of us, so.
It is early in the game. I'd have to review the law, what requirements the law would allow and how an ordinance would interplay. Speaking in generalities, if the law, the state statute said you can grow if you have X, Y, and Z in place, I'd have to read the statute and see whether that actually allowed us to tack on a scrubber. That may be something that the legislature considered and we would be foreclosed from doing something to that level. Maybe not. It depends on the statutory language, which I don't know any municipality in Utah's.
And there are no statutory language, and I might miss something, but the only thing I saw in our ordinance is that you could not deny a, I saw on the fact that it violates federal law. Because marijuana is still against the law, against federal law, but we cannot deny a condition, we could not say, no, we're not going to issue a conditional use permit because it violates federal law. That's the only requirement that's on the statute. Now, I think that that's a reasonable condition because you're protecting the community. But I think that what I would want to do is maybe from whoever does this, provide some validation on actually what odors they're emitting. What else was I gonna say? Oh, no, no. The only thing to be aware of is, West Jordan would really only have to have one of these processing facilities. If we have a processing facility here and someone applies for another one, the state of Utah can step in and then they'd be able to see to see if it's appropriate to have two in one municipality. So the whole goal of this is to not ban one municipality with more than one. And so, but I think that condition of approval, I think that's the word, normally put upon a use to mitigate detrimental impacts, I think is appropriate, in my opinion, at this point in time, so.
Is there an expectation or an anticipation of how many of these facilities are going to be? Or do they expect every municipality is going to have one?
I talked to the Department of Agriculture, he does not think that because they are quite costly just to get going and so. And I don't know what the market will be for it. And so it really is a little difficult to determine at this time.
Commissioner Green.
So what we're really talking about is just getting ahead of the game with the statute. That the statute requires us to have some areas that allows this. We're trying to decide what areas are most appropriate for the city. And it's not a forgiven conclusion or foregone conclusion that it will ever even come to West Jordan. It could go to West Valley, it could go to Draper, wherever, whatever the business thinks is more economically viable, but we're just required to have this in place in anticipation of this.
Yeah, so this is a statutory requirement. It's not quite the same as a sexual oriented business, that's more of a protection of speech, that you have to allow that somewhere in a city, which the city allows sexual oriented businesses in an M2 zone, however, we don't have any. And so, but we cannot exclude them. And by statute, we can't, I think that they're very careful how they craft the ordinance because if a city has an industrial or an agricultural zone, then they have to allow for, well, there's lots of cities that don't have either of those anymore and so. So largely, a bedroom community wouldn't have to deal with it. And so I really think that, yes, Calvin, you're right, it's just by statute that we have to get our ordinance in line with the statute by July, and so.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions, and I'm not an expert on this field by any means. So that's why I'm asking these questions. Is it feasible or can we, as a body or even as a city, require the indoor grow instead of an outdoor grow?
No.
Okay, so that's how...
As far as the production facilities, if you go to the statute, they have that very well determined on what it would look like. The one thing that the outdoor grow or the indoor grow cannot be visible from off-site. So you can't drive by and say, oh, well, look, there's a bunch of nine-foot-tall pot plants because you can't see them, so.
And another question which you may or may not know, and again, we're into some unknowns, but my understanding is it takes a large amount of water to operate the plants and the grows.
I don't know. I really, it's probably as water-thirsty as any large plant, I would imagine, but I don't have any knowledge on that whatsoever.
You don't know?
I'm not a whole lot more than like typical residents, but not like fairytale, so.
Okay.
This is gonna be fun. If you'll hit your button, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Hatch.
Quick question on sales tax. If we do allow one in our area, are we then, do we get the sales tax if there's purchases?
Probably imagine, I don't know.
I've been to the one in Mesquite, and there are cars, as soon as it opens, there are cars lined up forever. It's incredible. It was a real learning experience to walk in there and see what they do. You can't smell anything, but it's really popular.
Was it a dispenser or a production facility?
Yes, and yes. Yes. And it was fascinating to watch, I mean, it was interesting.
Sorry I have to say this, but I imagine the sales of onions went way up too, so.
All right, any more discussion?
I was just gonna say, this adds a whole new meaning to the word Rocky Mountain High.
No, I think we should have a church. Not the record, right?
We are not off the record, we're still recording.
So, I just need a direction from the planning commission at this point, if you feel like you're, if you want to process it further, that doesn't bother, but just be mindful, we're up against that July timeframe and so.
Well, my personal opinion is, is that the M2 is gonna be as good as anything. Right now, it's a consolidated area in the city. We allow strip clubs, we can have strip and weed at the same point, but hey. But M2's probably a good place for it. And I would think that the A20, I mean, we're obviously not going to put it in A1 zone, so, you know, we've got to find a zone that works. And I would think that A20 is about the right zone to put it in.
The only reason I recommend A20 is that there are still A5 zones and A1 that are very close to residential uses. And so I think that the A20 zone, quite frankly, the only place it exists anymore is the far west part of the city. It doesn't exist anywhere else any longer. I think most, most of it's gone, other than the dry farms out there. But A1 and A5, there's still pockets of that on the east side of the city and on the west side of the city that I believe statutory would may even put it too close to residential zone, but I just don't think that that's the appropriate place for it, so.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Looney.
Can you pull up the maps again showing these two zones?
Oh, we can use the pointer. Make sure we get used to it. We can do that now.
We should just get a clapper.
I did it work. Oh, it did work.
Now we got dueling clappers.
I will do that though, so we can see, because it is. Had to learn how to use that, nobody gave me a tutorial.
We've given him the power now.
So the majority, you can see that marijuana is kind of spread out around some of the areas of the city. But the A20 zone is basically concentrated around the Danone yogurt site, Cisco, those areas. The law requirement for, so it's in this area, in the core, right in here. Now, take this piece, it's a, I guess that's not working. Take this five-acre piece of property right in here, that's M1. However, it is industrial on the land use map, so if it has the five-acre requirement, they could bring a re-zone through the planning commission and city council if they felt like that was a property they wanted to purchase and do this kind of operation on, so.
And the agricultural zones, is it just west right here of that neighborhood?
The agricultural zones are basically here and back when you get up in this area, up in here. But those are all owned by generally the same people who I really do not, or they may, if the price is right, they may sell 20 acres off, so. Can't ever say that, and so.
Commissioner Green.
So even though they have, if we put in an A20, the smallest area would be 20, but the maximum grow would be four acres of the 20.
Any more discussions?
I'm just gonna say I like the M2 and the A20 from my perspective, because I think it...
I agree.
I mean, when you're talking about A20, and they gotta have a 20-acre piece of property, and they're only going to be able to cultivate four of it for the marijuana, I think that that provides the buffer that we're gonna want.
And a processing facility can include a grow operation, it doesn't necessarily have to, okay, so.
Commissioner Thomas.
Is the requirements for manufacturing are same as four acres?
If we get in the M2 zone, the minimum lot size in M2 zones, five acres, in a 15,000 square foot building, so.
But even if you added the grow with the manufacturing, you still...
Can't exceed four acres.
Okay.
Anybody wanna make a motion? Okay, we stand adjourned until March 5.